Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this morning's regular meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, December 1st, 2025. We're going to start the meeting today with an indication by Pastor Bill Franzen. If you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Borelli. Do we have Pastor Franzen? No? Supervisor Gould, would you mind leading us in a prayer?
Please join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you and praise you today. Lord, we thank you for this great nation, this experiment in self-government that you've given us, Lord. Help us to govern the county wisely, watch over our employees. Many of them have dangerous jobs. Bring them home safely to loving arms of their families. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please face the flag of a country that has brought more prosperity to the world than mankind has ever known.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board of Supervisors, made by a motion recessed into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A, 3417. Looking for a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on January 5th, 2026 at 9:00 a.m.
So moved. Second.
With that motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I expect to have it do have its order. Thank you. We'll move to official business to come before the board. Item number one, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Davis.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Nothing to report.
Thank you. Move to item number two, committee and/or legislative reports. We'll start with Supervisor Martin this morning. Good morning.
Nothing this morning.
Thank you. Supervisor Borelli.
Nothing to report.
Supervisor Gould.
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Letman. Thank you, and I have nothing to report. We'll move to County Manager's Report. Item number three, Manager Elters.
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. I have no report today.
All right. We have a presentation this morning. A presentation of the 2024 Service Awards, recognizing employees who have achieved significant milestones of continuous service during the 2024 calendar year. Awards include recognition for 15 years, 20 years, and 25-year service milestones, as well as special honors for Judge Barbara Brown, celebrating 35 years of dedicated service to the county and the justice system. And Deborah Cass, Library Information Support Technician, celebrating 30 years of exceptional service, enriching the community through her longstanding support of public library services. Do you know who's going to be giving the report or the presentation? Come up to the podium, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. So good morning, Chairman, members of the board, and those who have joined us today. It is my privilege to recognize a distinguished group of Mojave County employees who reached significant career milestones in 2024. Today, we honor their years of dedicated service and their steadfast commitment to our community. Please note this presentation includes only those employees who elected to participate in today's ceremony. Before we begin, I would like to invite the members of the Board of Supervisors to step forward to greet our recipients with handshakes and photographs as each name is announced. Recipients, when your name is called, please come forward, pause for an individual photo with the board, and then move to the side. Once all individuals have been recognized, we would like to do a group photo with the board. I'd like you guys all to come forward, please. So we'll begin today's recognition with one of the remarkable milestones, 30 years of devoted service to Mojave County. She joined the library district on October 24th, 1994, after previously working in the treasurer's and assessor's offices and taking time off to raise her daughter. She spent eight years in the cataloging department before moving into public training, teaching computer use and internet browsers, Microsoft Office, and various connected devices. She also provides IT support for the library. She is proud to be part of the library district and celebrating 30 years of service to the public. I present to you Deb Cass. And unfortunately, Judge Barbara Brown was not able to join us today. Though her 35 years of continued outstanding service, I'd still like to do a round of applause for her because she has been instrumental for the North Canyon Justice Court of District One. So next, we are proud to recognize employees who've reached their 15 or 20-year service milestones in 2024. Over the years, they've demonstrated integrity, professionalism, and dedication to public service, strengthening our organization, and positively impacting the communities we serve. These are in order by last name, so bear with me. First, for 15 years, we have Helen Frank, probation deputy probation officer, two. Celebrating 20 years, we have Matt Geraldi, Sheriff Sergeant. And another with 20 years of service, Evan Hartman, part of the Human Resource and Risk Management, Risk Management Analyst. Celebrating 15 years, Veronica Hickey, Sheriff's Office Lieutenant for the Adult Detention Center. 20 years, James Lambert, Public Works GIS Technician. Another with 20 years, Michelle Lee, Sheriff's Office Assistant Senior. All right, and the last two that's joined us today for 20 years, Sheriff's Office Lieutenant, John Salvino. All right, now if we can get everybody to gather back up. John, don't go too far, please. And we'll do a group photo. And as the lovely staff are taking pictures. So one last time, congratulations to all of our Service Award recipients. We're truly grateful for your commitment and proud to celebrate your achievements today. And thank you. Thank you, Board.
Congratulations again to all. That's tremendous. We'll move to our consent agenda this morning. Items number four through 46. Supervisor Martin, would you like to remove any items from consent this morning? Supervisor Borelli. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Items seven, 18, and 21.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Martin, or excuse me, Supervisor Letman, excuse me.
Item four. Excuse me, item four, item 17, you got 18, right? Yeah, 19.
And I'm not going to pull any. Looking for a motion to approve consent as presented, with the exception of items four, seven, 17, 18, 19, 21, and 41.
So moved.
I have a second.
Forty-one.
Forty-one, yes.
Forty-one.
Yeah, I have four, seven, 17, 18, 19, 21, 41. Motion second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I expect to have it do have its order. We'll move to item number four. Supervisor Letman.
City manager, uh, city, County Manager Elters, could you just real briefly tell us what we should expect at this special meeting we're going to have on December 8th?
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. Yes, I'd be happy to. As directed by the board and the strategy for recruitment is that the panel would interview and those members, those candidates, and send the recommendation, send the ranking to the board for the board to decide the next steps. To that end, 10 candidates will be interviewed. The interviews will take place tomorrow and Wednesday. The 10 candidates are the candidates that the board members selected and sent to the panel to interview. The panel will conclude the interviews on Wednesday, rank those 10 candidates, and then send the ranking to the board, which the board will review during the special, the special meeting on Thursday, and then decide from there what the board's next step will be as far as selecting from interviewing how many candidate the board, the board wishes to interview and so on.
Okay, so to be clear, we're not going to be interviewing candidates on December 8th.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Letman, I do not believe that is the intent. I think the intent is to, for HR and the clerk of the board to meet with you, give you opportunity to take a look at the ranking that you're going to receive from the panel, discuss next steps, decide, and if it's your wishes to discuss next steps, decide, and if it's your wishes to interview, then staff will, will move forward with scheduling those interviews.
I'll go ahead and move for approval of item number four.
You heard that motion. Additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Ayes appear to have it, do have its order. Thank you. We'll move to item number seven, approve special event liquor license for SOAR. Fifteen ninety-five East Joy Lane, Fort Mojave, Arizona. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and a member of the public that requested this be pulled for discussion.
Thank you. We do have Mr. Chuck DeShazer.
Morning. My name's Chuck DeShazer, eight-seven-seven-eight Polaris Road, Koppock, Arizona. I really have no feelings one way or another on this item, but I thought it should be brought to the attention of you guys are trying to approve a special event liquor license for stop overdose addiction resources. Are you going to start having open bars at AA meetings next? I mean, it seems a little silly. I'm just kind of a common sense kind of guy that you would, you get people like Keith Whitley died at the age of thirty-four from drinking too much Jack Daniels, and that's pretty much all I have to say on that matter. Thank you.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is somewhat ironic, but I'm going to go ahead and move for approval.
I'll second that.
For that motion and second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
Ayes appear to have it, do have its ordered. We'll move to item number seventeen. Supervisor Letman.
So I've asked Mr. Mornian to go ahead and come on down and, and please describe to us what item seventeen is and, and really what I was looking for on this item. It's complex. Seventeen and eighteen are both going to be complex. And I'm kind of looking for a, just a brief summary of what are the key changes. This was a lot of reading material, and by the way, for the clerk, I would question this item being on the consent agenda along with eighteen. These are so extensive, both of these. Probably should be on the regular agenda. That's just a minor point, though, but Luke, if you could kind of tell us what's going on in seventeen and what the key changes are.
Certainly, Chairman and Supervisor Letman, and I will make a note of that for next year, especially for item seventeen. This is an annual item, goes before the board every year. And basically what this is, and if, if there's very specific questions, I am going to rely on Kip Anderson, our court administrator. But essentially, certain fees that are collected by the Superior Court and the justice courts, filing fees are the bulk here. Statute says that five percent of those fees that are collected are then supposed to be distributed to certain funds that are set forth in statute, and statute provides a formula for arriving at which amounts get distributed where. And so that's what this, this item is.
Okay, so we're supplementing funding as a result of these excess fines? Is, is that how I understand this?
Supervisor, I wouldn't call them excess fines. These are fees collected by the courts, primarily filing fees. There's, I just read it out of the statute. Five percent of any monies collected by the Superior Court, including the clerk of the court and justice courts, payment of filing fees, clerk fees, diversion fees, adult and juvenile probation fees, juvenile monetary assessments, fines, penalties, surcharges, sanctions, and forfeiture are then transmitted to the county treasurer for allocation. And the formula for that is that, so if you have a hundred dollars in, in fees that are collected, five dollars of that is going to be allocated, okay? And it's twenty-one point six one percent goes to the state aid to county attorneys fund, twenty point five three goes to state aid to indigent defense fund, fifty-seven point three seven goes to the local courts assistance fund, and then point four nine percent is transmitted to the state treasurer, who then passes that on to the Department of Law.
Okay, so I think it's on page five of the back, it's either four or five. There's a section H and a section I that talks about a baseline created way back in nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight. And it talks about a similar allocation that you were mentioning. So for the purposes of section I, if you take a look at that, this money's collected pursuant to this section, she'll be allocated as follows. So the percentages, you just read to me, did they update these totals or, or is this discretion they are on our part? Or what is that formula in item, in item I, excuse me, item J?
I believe that that is when, when the statute was enacted, that that was how the, the fees were distributed in that year, in the base year. Because this statute doesn't kick in unless the county collects more than what was collected in the base year.
Correct.
And so we go off of, we go off of the other section, sorry. Section C. C and then E gives us the statutory formula for the distribution in those, in, in years when the county collects more than what was collected in the base year.
Okay, so category or item J has been updated.
That's my understanding, yes.
I, I think that's correct. I'm going to go ahead and move for approval of item seventeen as read.
You heard that motion. Do I have a second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Ayes appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Item eighteen, approve recommended revisions to the Mojave County Personnel Policies and Procedures, section six point one, six point one-two, six point one-three, six point fourteen, six point three oh seven, six point seven, and six point nine as attached in the backup materials. Supervisor Letman, or excuse me, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Mornian wisely stayed at the podium so he can explain what's going on here, too. Chairman, Supervisor Gould, happy to provide a summary here. A lot of the sections that are listed, it was purely very, very minor grammatical or formatting changes. So six point one and six point one-two, purely grammatical changes. It's shown in the red line in the backup. I think we changed one word in one of them and then some punctuation in another one. Six point one-three is claim for reimbursement of travel expenses. We added a sentence in this section to just provide some additional clarity to specify that the P card, the county P card is the preferred method of payment. So this section of the policy basically says that employees can be reimbursed for certain travel expenses. But it is the county's preference because we earn a rebate on P card purchases that employees do not use their personal credit card and then submit for reimbursement. The preference would be that they use a county issued P card for those expenses. Six point one-four, this is travel regulations for all travel claims. This stems back to September when Chairman Lingenfelter put an item on the board that changed the minimum mileage requirement that would qualify an employee to receive per diem when they're traveling. That reduced the mileage requirement for seventy-five miles or more down to forty miles or more. Wanted to bring this back just to make sure that the language changes in that section were formally adopted and approved by the board. But in, in so doing, looking at that entire section, realized that there was some other areas that needed improvement. Those namely just specifying in there that when we talk about traveling for forty miles or more, the intent, what we are not approving is that an employee in the normal course of their daily assigned duties, if they're driving more than forty miles, the county's not going to be buying them lunch every day. We have a lot of county employees, road crews and sheriff's deputies, certainly. I don't believe the intent here was that the county was going to buy them a meal every day in their, in their normal job duties. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was specified in policy because as soon as that, that item was passed in September, I immediately started getting calls from many departments saying, hey, we're getting questions from employees, so this is just to provide some clarity there. The other piece in here was added a section that discusses compliance with IRS regulations. The IRS stands on single day travel. So this is any travel that does not include an overnight stay somewhere, or what the IRS calls a substantial period of rest, which generally involves sleeping in a bed, renting a room somewhere. That any per diem or reimbursement for travel expenses in those cases of single day travel is to be considered a taxable fringe benefit for the employee receiving it. And so what we will do is beginning January first with, with the start of the new tax year, is we will, we will start including that in, in the gross wages of the employee. Taxes will be withheld, and that way we will be fully compliant there.
So Uncle Sam wants to make sure he gets his piece.
That is correct. We all know how that goes, right Supervisor?
On Swanson explaining taxes in the sitcom Park and Recreation, where he takes bites out of the little girl sandwich.
I am familiar with that. Before I go on to the, the next section, any, any questions about that so far?
Specifically on section six point fourteen, I think the intent was that an employee would be on active travel. Is that included in this section?
Chairman Lingenfelter, yes, it is. It clarifies that when we get down to the very bottom, section six point nine is the definitions listed at the end of the personnel policies and procedures. And we've added some additional definitions in there for what is authorized travel status, overnight travel, non overnight travel, just to, just to add clarity.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Mornian, when we make changes to the employee policies, do we send those out to the employees so they're aware of them? Chairman Lingenfelter, Supervisor Gould, I would have to defer to HR on that. But given the, how many employees this, this affects, we will certainly make sure that it is communicated. I'm not sure if that is done for every single change or not. There is a change log at the, at the very end of the Personnel Policies and Procedures document that lists exactly the date and what changes were made to which sections.
It seems like it would be good form to let the employees know that we've changed things so that they take note of those changes. They may not want that free meal if it's going to kick them up into the next pack bracket. You know, that free meal may end up costing them a thousand dollars.
Supervisor Gould, I will say that I have some internal memos drafted that will be sent out to the county management team that they're kind of set up in a, in a frequently asked question type of format. They'll address a lot of the questions that we would get from the department. And so management will be able to pass that information along to their staff.
Sounds great. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You bet. Director Mornian, just one more question on that specific section. Starting in January, we're just going to be counting as a fringe benefit. Is that something they just changed in law or has that been there for a long time?
Chairman Lingenfelter, great question. This is nothing new. It's just in the course of looking into this, realizing that the county has not been fully compliant in this regard.
Has the county ever gotten dinged for it in our audits? Have we ever been cited for it in our audits or anything like that? Have we ever gotten into any trouble for that?
Not that I am aware, Chairman Lingenfelter, certainly not in the time that I've been the chief financial officer.
You're saying it's mandated to do that?
It is mandated. The next section, section six point three zero seven, this is the assigned vehicle section. And there was one request for a change from our public works director, and that was to add an additional blade operator in the Colorado City area to the positions that are authorized to take a county vehicle home. Again, here we have IRS compliance issue, and so I wanted to provide some clarity there as well. The IRS basically says that anytime a employer provides a vehicle to an employee, the value of any personal use of that vehicle must be calculated and included as a taxable fringe benefit. We added a section, section C, because the IRS does provide exclusions for certain types of vehicles, heavy construction equipment, law enforcement, you know, the deputies patrol vehicles, things of that nature. And so just including a section here that, that says these are the types of vehicles that qualify for that exclusion. And then we, currently the county uses what is called the commuting valuation. So any employee who is driving a county vehicle to and from work, and those positions are specifically authorized within the county policy, they are charged a dollar fifty each way for that commute value, and that is included in their gross wages. There is a subset of employees that the IRS calls control employees. There's a number of different ways you can categorize, categorize that, and they have to be treated a little bit differently. And so we are going to be using the cents per mile valuation method. Control employees, as the IRS defines them, we're using the definition that says it's any employees that earn over a certain threshold. That threshold is changed and updated annually. But again, similar to the per diem charges, we will implement this for that very small subset of employees beginning January first so that we are fully compliant. Moving on to section six point seven, this is, it was previously titled meal, or me, meal meeting, meeting meals, excuse me. Changed the title to purchase of food and beverages. This is probably the, the biggest change of the changes that are put before you today. This basically provides some guidance for when it is appropriate and allowable to expend county funds for the purchase of food and beverages. There are certainly times when it does make sense to do this. It's not something that we want to be or will approve as run-of-the-mill kind of ordinary course of business. But when we have special events, like if the governor or another dignitary comes to visit, it certainly makes sense to be able to provide some refreshments if there's a, a meeting where, where those government officials as well as members of the public are present. Other examples that I would cite would be ground breakings, ribbon cuttings, things of that nature. We also have our sheriff's, our sheriff's office sometimes hosts training events where there's six or seven outside agencies that are coming for training. And so to be able to provide some light refreshments, that sort of thing. That's, that's really what this guidance provides. It does enact clear dollar thresholds. Anytime that a meal or like a, like a snack or light refreshment is purchased, those are tied back to the GSA per diem amounts. And so that basically makes our, our policy consistent throughout whether you're in travel status and the county is paying for a meal when you're in travel status, or whether there's one of these special types of very irregularly occurring events. They would be subject to the same type of dollar threshold for any expenditures. And there's also an approval form in there. Like I said, this is not intended to be a frequent occurrence or run-of-the-mill occurrence. And so each one of those food and beverages purchases is supposed to be approved by the department head or the elected official prior to the expense being.
Any questions on that?
Thank you, Director Mornian. Any questions for the director?
And I will just, I will just say one more thing, Chairman Lingenfelter, the last section on the definitions. One item, well, we added five definitions, authorized travel, authorized travel status, non overnight travel, overnight travel, and then this is specific to the board members. ARS eleven two fifteen says that duty stations for the board members must be assigned or defined. And so we provided a definition in there that basically says that that will be either the district office of the supervisor or the personal residence of the supervisor. That is to be determined by each one of you individually. So we will send something out to your offices just asking for you to let us know which one of those locations you want to be considered your duty station. That duty station is used when we're calculating that forty miles or more type of travel for per diem reimbursement and stuff. But this is, this is a statute where our county policy previously was completely silent on it, and so it didn't address it. So this gets us into compliance there as well.
Entertaining discussion or a motion?
I have a question.
Supervisor Letman, thank you.
So I have a question. It's kind of related. It's not specific to this particular policy statement. So I was asking earlier about vehicle or per diem, excuse me, mileage reimbursement for the use of personal vehicles. Is the intent of that, and I know the IRS sets, sets an amount for that, is the intent of that to merely to merely cover the employee's expense of operating that vehicle as best can be determined? Or is there something else intended in that amount?
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Letman, that mileage reimbursement, so just, just to make sure everybody is, is clear on this, this is business use of a personal vehicle. Um, so if an employee has to drive down to Phoenix for a, a conference or a business meeting, something like that, meet with the legislature. Um, county policy says that generally the county's preference is that that employee would take a county motor pool vehicle if they do not have an assigned county vehicle. Uh, if a, if a county motor pool vehicle is not available for that date of travel, or if a uh the employee is, you know, extending the business trip uh for some personal uh reasons, then they, they can receive authorization to take a personal vehicle. That IRS uh cents per mile value, it's seventy cents per mile this year. That is intended to cover uh and reimburse the employee for any expenses that they are incurring in the use of their vehicle. That would be fuel, that would be wear and tear. It would, it, it's all inclusive.
Okay, the reason I bring it up, um, car wasn't available for me when I had to go down to Yuma for the CSA meeting, so I took my own personal vehicle, which happens to be an EV. So it's an electric. And then turning in my reimbursement, it turns out I think I was given two hundred and forty dollars for that drive to Yuma and back. And I estimated the cost of, of an EV, the one mine in particular, total charging cost for that trip was forty six dollars. Now, I understand there's wear and tear on my car, but there's only two things that are are wear and tear on an EV, and that's the tires and the battery. And I think the, the amount I saw, a battery uh can be depreciated on an EV or a hybrid for that matter, at about seven cents a mile. So that adds some amount. I would just encourage that um we take a second look at the amount we, we reimburse for the use of a, of a personal EV or a hybrid or a plug-in hybrid. Because I don't think the intent was for me to spend fifty five dollars maybe, including wear and tear, and get reimbursed two hundred and forty two dollars. And I'm going to send some of that money back uh to the county. I don't think it's appropriate. I keep that. But I would like to see a revision or a, a look at the use again of hybrids, plug-in hybrids and EVs when employees are using that in lieu of a county vehicle. That's my only point.
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Letman, I did do some quick research, uh since you mentioned that before the start of the meeting. Um, I have a little bit more research to do. Just need to make sure that there are no uh state or federal regulations that preclude us from having, using the IRS standard rate for one uh group of employees or vehicles and having a separate rate for another group of employees or vehicles. Um, I will say there are some kind of administrative considerations that we'll have to look at as well because finance does not typically see the vehicle. Uh, it, there's going to be some element of honor system going on here. Uh, we can certainly punt to the departments whose employees are traveling to make sure that they are verifying, hey, what vehicle are you taking? And they can collect, you know, make and model, license number, that sort of thing. But I will, I will look into it and report back to the board.
Yeah, my, my point is a hybrid, a plug-in hybrid or an EV are far lower cost to operate. Okay, than a, you know, than an ICE vehicle or an internal combustion engine vehicle, excuse me. And so um I, I think that's the point I'm trying to make is that the reimbursement schedule shouldn't be the same. That's why I bought an EV. It's far, it costs me much less to operate it than a traditional vehicle.
Supervisor, your point is well taken. It's likely that that section of our policy has not been looked at in, in some time. And so we'll take a look at it and report back to the board.
Other comments? Discussion? Otherwise I entertain a motion. Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Heard that motion. Second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Thank you. Move to item number nineteen, approve of settling a public hearing. Setting a public hearing uh during the regular meeting on January fifth, twenty twenty six to consider adoption of the two thousand seventeen model food code and to approve amendments related to Mojave County Ordinance ninety eight dash ten to be effective March first, twenty twenty six, which will benefit the health and welfare of the residents of Mojave County. Supervisor Letman.
So Director Palmer, you didn't really need to come down for this. My only point in pulling this was to request, this is extensive. Uh, we've already had a look at it before now. My request was for that meeting in January. Could you please prepare as part of the background documentation, the before and after? Okay, so there's a number of significant changes, I believe you're proposing this. And I would really like to know what feedback you've received, uh at least during your presentation. If you could tell us the feedback you have received from food service operators, the people this is going to affect. That's the only reason I pulled this. Just give us a before and after, easy to understand of these changes, which are significant.
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Letman, absolutely. We have a presentation prepared that has the survey results, the town halls that were held, and the feedback from the Board of Health meeting when we presented it there.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move for approval of item nineteen.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Thank you. Move to item number twenty one. Approve and authorize the chairman of the board to sign the IGA regarding SNAP education for community-driven initiatives and to amend the attached Mojave County budget funding um to include IGA funds for the fiscal twenty six year amended, amended budget is included in the backup materials. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and member of the public requested the speaker.
We have Mr. Scotty McClure signed up to speak. Thank you.
Scotty from Bullhead, uh. First thing that popped in my mind when I read this was SNAP. You guys gave away over a hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money to something, you know, SNAP program here about a month ago, and some of us weren't real happy with that, but that had nothing to do with that. But after reading more of it, uh, I'd like to know, it's kind of hard to understand. What the heck is like, things like health equity? I have no idea what the, you know, she's right here. Maybe she can explain some more of this.
Director Palmer, you want to come up and? If you answer those questions.
Good morning, Chair, Chairman Lingefelter and Board. The financial contribution that was requested that uh Mr. McClure is referring to was for the Women Infant Children Program, which is separate from SNAP. SNAP is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program that's ran by the federal government. There is the education component of SNAP, which is, it was created originally to help inform and educate SNAP recipients on how to best utilize their food dollars for the nutritional benefit to themselves and their family. SNAP Ed was discontinued as of uh September thirtieth. October first, we were offered some, by um we were offered an opportunity to obtain some of the dollars that were received at the state level that were unspent in order to do a special project for Mojave County. And what was decided at that time is modeling a expansion of food pantry items for the senior centers. Um, somewhat like the Golden Shores Senior Center, if you've been there, they have shelving that's available with the food items that remain on the shelves. So that way the seniors that come in for their congregant food during the lunch hour, they can then um obtain whatever food items that they need at their homes.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Palmer, can you, do you have any idea what health equity means?
Health equity for Mojave County means every single resident within Mojave County has an opportunity to participate in a program.
So it's full and yeah, open to all?
Correct. Uh, generally for us, for Mojave County, it, it speaks to those who live outside of the major city areas that they will still have an opportunity to be benefited by a program despite their location.
It seems like equity is the new buzzword for the last couple of years. Um, used to be um equal opportu- you had equal opportunity, but you could not guarantee equal outcome. It seems like the emphasis on equity is to try to guarantee equal outcome. But it's just rhetoric, you know?
Director Palmer, uh just for the record, uh that funding that was authorized by the board prior, when we had the government shutdown, um how many of those funds were actually spent locally?
They were not spent locally. We spent zero dollars. WIC was funded through September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. So we will not need to dip into those funds.
So those funds, just they go back to the general fund then, do they?
Correct.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, yes, indeed. Those funds were never expended or uh incurred, so they remain in the general fund where they.
Go back to contingency.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Does that take action from the board?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gould, the board approved it with the understanding that it would be incurred only if needed. The fact that it was really not needed, we felt like it was automatically uh returned to the, without board action. If the board feels like that step is necessary, we could do so. I did report to you as a board at the last board meeting informing you that the government shutdown ended and the federal government reopened before we incurred any costs, so we didn't have to. But again, the way the language was written, the authorization that was requested from the board and approved basically implied that it would, if not used, it would remain what it is and, and we took it as such.
Mr. Chairman, the reason that I get concerned about this stuff is we have actions of the board that expire at a particular time. But yet those are not, they don't truly expire without action from the board. If you take a look at zoning issues, we tell somebody to do something by a certain date and that, that this, their authority to do that expires if they don't do it by that date, but yet that thing's still out there cooking. And somebody else buys the property and rolls with that, whatever the uh exemption that we gave. But I just want to make sure that we don't just automatically assume things come back automatically.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gould, we will be happy to bring it back. My, just for clarification, not to argue um that was tied specifically to an event where the government shutdown was taking place. The government reopened, so God forbid, government shuts down again. That action, as far as we're concerned, is moot. We cannot reuse those dollars because they were tied to the one that was in October of twenty twenty five, which ended and the government reopened before we spent those dollars. So if government shutdown occurs in the future and there is a need for similar, whether that program or some other program, we would have to come back to the board because that activity is completely uh outdated and, and not relevant.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
The, well, that's good. I wouldn't have wanted to be blanket in uh authorization to spend that money on in any event of a government shutdown, since the federal government has not had a budget in almost twenty years. They don't, they haven't observed regular order. Uh, they continue to run our federal government through continuing resolutions, which is rather ridiculous. But the, by the, the afternoon that we actually, after we voted that issue, the Trump administration had already said they were going to backfill that money with tariff money anyway. So it was moot the day, an hour after it was done, it was moot anyway. But thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, entertain a motion for item number twenty one.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. I appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Thank you. Move to item number forty one. Acceptance of the one hundred thousand dollar funding allocation from the state of Arizona to the Arizona Search and Rescue Coordinators Association for the Arizona Search and Rescue Conferences for twenty twenty six and twenty twenty eight. The funding is to be used to cover expenses for the conferences as provided in the backup material. Uh, direct finance to create budget three two zero uh two three nine one zero as submitted. Supervisor Gould, you pulled this item. Oh, excuse me, Supervisor Martin, you pulled this item. Thank you.
I, I had a call from a constituent that had a, had a concern about this and actually a question. And I just felt that it would be better to discuss this in public than for me just to offer my opinion on this. So that's why I did it. I don't know who's gonna, who, who's gonna address it, but if there's somebody that from the sheriff's office or search and rescue can.
Terrific. Laura, do we have anybody from sheriff's office?
We have um Dean McKee or Edward um Traficanti, I think is his last name, um online.
Great.
It looks like Dean McKee is available. He's online.
Great. Mr. McKee, are you there with us?
Chairman Lingefelter, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, uh, good morning.
Good morning.
Supervisor Martin, if you want to ask the questions that you had?
Well, can you briefly explain exactly what this is going for? Like I say, I got a call from a constituent. And rather than me read him the background uh materials, I, I wanted something in public that we could let everybody hear.
Yes, every two years, the uh, uh Arizona Sheriff's Association Search and Rescue Coordinators, uh they put on a search and rescue conference every two years in Heber. And this is to pay for the training, the use of the facility, uh per diem, uh et cetera.
Okay, just, just to kind of clarify things. Search and rescue is mandated by state law for the sheriff's office. But what about the search and rescue volunteers and, and things that are done here? Are they actually department employees?
They are search and rescue volunteers for the sheriff's office. Um, I'm, I'm not sure I understand exactly what your question is.
Are they, are, are the search and rescued, I, I know in the past there used to be deputies uh that were assigned to search and rescue. Are there currently any department personnel assigned to search and rescue?
Yes, we have a sergeant and a detective that are assigned to the search and rescue uh unit. And everything else is made up of our search and rescue volunteers. I hope that answers your question, Supervisor Martin.
Yes, that's exactly what I wanted to hear. And with that, I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a second.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Now, we're going to do a, a brief pause. Uh, we have some young Mojave County residents here, uh from Golden Valley Christian Academy. They're here for item number twenty nine, which is approved on consent. Uh, concept, accept the donation of money totaling five hundred and twenty dollars from the Golden Valley Christian Academy to offset the cost of maintaining restrooms at Veterans Park in Golden Valley, Arizona. The funds are to be deposited into org two one six seven eight two zero five Community Parks, object number uh thirty nine five hundred and accept the revised budget. They'd like to have a photo. So I want to thank you guys all for waiting very patiently. You guys did a great job. We're going to come out in front and take a picture with you guys. Public hearings, we're going to open up the public hearing out of number forty seven. Discussing and possible action regarding approve the adoption of BOS Resolution number twenty twenty five uh dash two hundred, a special use permit for Assessor's Parcel number three one seven dash four five dash zero seven three to allow for a private cemetery in an A general zone in the White Hills vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. Commission recommended approval by a. Commission recommended approval by a five to three vote. We have one person that signed up to speak on item number 47 during public hearing. Mohammed Faraz Alcyber. Excuse me if I mispronounce your last name. You'd state your name and address for the record. We'd appreciate it.
My name is Mohammed Faraz Alcyber. My address is 8820 Quentin Lane, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89123. But I'm here just for any questions in case Supervisor just have any questions, I'll, I'm here to be on.
Okay, if you want to remain in the front, after I close public hearing, if there's any discussion, we'll bring you back up.
So I'll stay here.
Just at the front row there. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on item number 47 during the public hearing? Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'd open up to the board for discussion. Would anybody like to hear from Development Services? Otherwise entertain a motion. Supervisor Burley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, come back up and.
Chairman.
You know, you send us this stuff. Can you, give me the, I know the intent here. Can you give me the whole background, the whole story?
So you often come, you know, like I work with community members and I see that people are young families or many families, they struggle with the burial. And especially during that difficult time and their loved one passes away. They have to, and they are short on money. They have to look around and find places, you know, like people who they can donate to. So we come up with an idea that we will offer them like free burial. Find a place and, you know, like set it up with a private cemetery where we can offer them a free burial.
Let's see, how many acres are we talking about?
Ten acres.
Ten acres. Is there going to be any, any other structures on this other than?
May have like a storage place, just keep the equipment, that's all. But there's no other plans to have any other structure there.
No religious, Mr. Chairman, no religious structures, temples or.
It's just like a plain, like we want to make it like very simple and like a quiet place where it feels like this for burial purposes, that's all.
Or cemetery spots are non-taxable. So, okay, thank you, sir.
Supervisor Martin.
Sir, are these burial spots available to any race, religion, anything like that? Or are they, are they for a specific group?
So thank you for this question. It's for now, we are keeping it, it is for Muslim community only for now. And we have a limited resources. That's what we are, we could come up with. So, and this, this land was also donated by one of the community members. So that, that's all that.
So if I understand, it's for the Muslim community?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Operations and maintenance of this, what, what does that look like?
So we'll make sure that we'll, we have like a set of volunteers, like permanent volunteers. We will take care of this place and we have like funds allocated for this where we can, we will continue to maintain it for the, for a longer time. And obviously we are not expecting anything from the county or, you know, like state of Arizona.
Thank you. Supervisor Martin.
I'd like to talk to.
Director Holtry?
Director Holtry, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Supervisor Martin.
Director Holtry, I, I noticed in the information given to us that the vote was five to three. Why, what were the three dissenting votes for? Do you know?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Martin, I can't speak directly to why they voted in opposition. Some of the comments that were brought up during the planning and zoning commission meeting was they were concerned that it was the entire, the entire 10 acres. But other than that, I didn't receive much more information of why they voted no.
In the past, I know that we've had other requests for private places for cemeteries. Are, are those past requests in line with what they're, we're getting now on this one?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Martin, that is correct. One of the requirements for this cemetery would be is they would have to complete a site plan as well. So they would have to make sure that anybody visiting the cemetery, that the, the drive entrances, parking, anything else associated with cemetery would have to meet those cemetery, are the guidelines of our site plan.
No. Director Holtry, what about size? This is a 10 acre. I, I recall maybe a plot here or there on private property, but I don't remember anything, at least in the last five acres, five years I've been on the board. That's something that's like 10 acres or more in size.
Mr. Chair, that's a good point. I believe the other requests were for family private cemeteries. And so they weren't really seeking to use the entirety of the parcel. I think they would probably have a house and then the adjacent to their house, they were going to have a private cemetery. On this particular parcel, it looks like they're looking to use the entirety of the parcel just for a cemetery.
That's the biggest one that I remember in the last five years.
Mr. Chair.
Attorney Davis.
I just want to make the board aware of, in the consideration of certain applicable laws. One of them is the Religious Land Use and Institution, Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. It specifically calls out, and I'll just read it. "No government shall impose a substantial burden on the religious exercise of a person residing or confined in institution, blah, 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 even if the burden results in a rule of general applicability unless the government demonstrates one of the two, which is that a furtherance of a compelling government interest and the least restrictive means in furthering that compelling government interest." I just want to make that aware for the board.
How does that factor in?
Just as in any discussions, because this is for religious purposes, then it really restricts what any conditions can be imposed on if the board considers any conditions.
I'm, I'm far more interested in size and who's going to maintain it and these types of practical things myself.
I wasn't responding to your comment. I just meant for general flexibility to the board.
Need a discussion? Supervisor Burley?
Chair, I'd like to see what you hold this. I'd like to do some more research on this issue.
Got a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we hold this for, I'd like to do some more research.
You'd like to postpone it for how many, how many days? 30, 45, 60?
Our next board meeting is going to be January 5th or January 20th?
It's until January 20th.
Is that a motion?
Yes, make a motion. We table this until January 20th.
Put that motion on second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
No.
I appear to have it, do have it sorted. Item number 48, we're going to open the public hearing on item number 48. Discussion and possible action regarding approve the adoption of BOS Resolution Number 2025-201, a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 31358055 from an AR 10 acre zone to an AR 7 acre zone to allow for a minor land division in the Kingland vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. We have nobody that signed up to speak during public hearing, Friday number 48. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item number 48? Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public hearing on item number 48. You're putting up for discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you for that. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I appear to have it, do have it sorted. We're going to open the public hearing on item number 49. Discussion and possible action regarding approve the adoption of Mojave County Ordinance 2025-10. A request to amend the Mojave County zoning ordinance, sections eight, 14, 32, 33, and 34, regarding data centers within Mojave County. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. We have one person that's signed up to speak, excuse me, two people that have signed up to speak. First being Mr. Scotty McClure. Jerry Hardy, you're on deck.
Scotty from Bullhead. I think Jerry's going to explain a little bit more what the electric company is going to want. You know, provide information for, you know, power. I think he's going to request that they provide their own power. But that doesn't solve the water problem at all. That's my question. I didn't read, I didn't find out what you're going to amend here or whatever, but without water, they can build their own power plant. I have no idea what the heck a data center is or why we need these things, but I'm not, because I still got one of those flip phones that you throw away, you know? So I'm not up to date on this crap. I still live in the 60s, I guess, which wasn't a bad times. Yeah, without water, that's the main thing here. They can go ahead and do a solar plant, a windmill, you know, for nighttime. Why do these things require so much electricity? I mean, my God, we can go to the moon and we can go to Mars. Which I'd like to send these data centers to Mars. That's where they belong. But water.
Jerry Hardy? State your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Chairman Lingefelter and Supervisors. My name is Jerry Hardy. I am with Mojave Electric Cooperative at 1999 Arena Drive. I just want to express our support for this change. Also would like to say that, express our gratitude and appreciation to be able to work with the county staff on this. Should other items like this or similar to come up, we are here to help whenever it comes to electric consumption. To Scotty's point, you know, depending on the size of the data center, we would, you know, regulate them or, or request that they provide their own power or whatnot. But we would work with our utility or Electric Arizona GNT, our provider, in, in doing so with further stuff like that. So no other comments, but we just want to say we appreciate your guys' time and allowing us to be part of it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing on item number 49? Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public hearing on item number 49. Director Holtry, you want to come up and just give a brief overview on this?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. I just wanted to kind of give a brief rundown on this. The, this is brought to the board's attention because of the board bringing it forward in the first place about data centers. We wanted to make sure that our zoning ordinance also references it. When we looked at it, we did not have any references to data centers in our zoning ordinance when it was first brought up a few months ago. That being said, we wanted to make sure that we did have a definition of what a data center is. That's the amendment to section eight in the zoning ordinance. We also wanted to be able to make sure that, that each zoning district had clear clarification on whether or not a data center is allowed. And looking at it and going off of what the board was recommending in a few months ago, we wanted to place data centers in each of the industrial zones, including our airport district with a special use permit. What that will require is that any data center that comes into the county, because we know that they all come in different shapes and sizes, that they would have to come to the board and demonstrate anything that they're doing, whether it's if they're going to be reducing their water, their power. But they would have to come to the, first to the commission and then to the board for final approval. And this would be on any data center that comes in. There's no zone that would allow for it outright. It would have to first come to the commission and board.
Thank you for that, Scott. Additional discussion?
So Director Holtry, basically what we're moving from is originally we had what sounded like a one-size-fits-all solution to a, we're going to consider these on a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Lemon, that's exactly correct.
Yeah, I completely support that.
Supervisor Martin, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, Director Holtry, a question. Are you aware that currently there have been two requests for data centers within Mojave County? Are you aware of those?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Martin, I'm aware of one that has recently just applied for a application. We currently don't have this in regulation right now. And so any, we had to take anything in that came to the county and base it off of what our current regulation is. Any data center that comes to the county, we would, we would put it in one of those industrial zones. And so any industrial zone that is currently in the county could, could have a data center right now. And so we did receive one application for a site plan to place a data center in. With these changes, any data center coming in to the county going forward have to go through that special use permit.
Okay, I'm aware of two. One is Entrada and then the second one was out at Red Lake. There was a proposal that I heard about out there. In regards to Entrada, is there any, you're saying this is an industrial zone is where they would be placed? Does Entrada have that capability? Because the, the whole, the big thing is, of course, is power and water. Entrada's already said that they have power committed from outside of Arizona. So that we can kind of, kind of eliminate that. What I'm concerned with is the water. Now, I know that Entrada Basin is one of the soundest basins that we've got. My question is, if we pass this and you make this an industrial area, does Entrada have that currently?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Martin, yes, Entrada was approved for zoning for industrial areas. There's many industrial areas, including an airport district in Entrada as well, that, that they would be able to apply for a data center with a special use permit in those, in those zones.
Okay, now concerning the one out at Red Lake, I mean, or even at the airport. I mean, we're, we've got a problem with water. And if those things use the amount of water that can be used, would it be appropriate to, to put one at the airport? I don't think so. I, I don't think any data centers in, in the Wallopi Valley, in that basin, there should not be a, because they're going to have to use the water from the basin there. Entrada is a whole different subject, but I, I'm thinking to put them at the airport, boy, I would not, I would not be in favor of that.
Mr. Chair.
The water.
I, I think the intent of this is, as Supervisor Lemon said, we're moving to a case-by-case. If we don't think that in a particular location is a good fit for a data center, then the SUP process would allow us to not, not allow that.
All right.
Mr. Chair, and just to clarify, the Entrada, Entrada currently has an application in review. And so they would not fit under the special use permit because they've already applied for their site plan.
Do you, you've looked over it? Do you see anything, do you see any obvious big red flags jumping out up there?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Martin, I personally have not looked at that specific site plan, but do not have any current red flag.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind Supervisor Martin that the board could strike that section of the proposed regulations if we don't want to see a data center at an airport. And we could do that from the dice here today. Thank you, sir.
Good point. Thank you. Supervisor Martin, I, I see Kathy Tackett Hicks in the front row. Did you want to hear from her at all?
I would sure like to.
Yeah. Morning.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks and I am speaking as part of the Entrada team. We did submit a commercial site. We did submit a commercial site plan for a data use, or for a data center use. Um, we've been working on this for a year and a half. We have, uh, contractual agreements that indicate that our land use zoning, our existing zoning, um, allows for data centers, and it did, and it does right now. If you put on the SUP, it'll be another level that we would have to do, and we could not say we're secured in our land use until that got done. We did want to limit that risk, absolutely. Uh, the only reason that we did that was not to be honorary or try to circumvent every, anything at all. Uh, we've been very open about the data center use, but in terms of the water, um, this is key, and the Entrada development already has a 100-year water adequacy approval from ADWR. We are placing the data center on existing zoned industrial property and a portion of our airport development zone, which was also set aside for manufacturing. So those land uses stick. Um, and the water allocation for the data center will come from the existing Entrada ADWR uh, water allocation. And an interesting fact, and I think it's all part of education, and I'm going to work on it in the coming year. The water use that ADWR gave to us for manufacturing and airport use is more than the water use for the data center. So the technology for data centers is rapidly changing. We're getting a lot better on water use. Every one of those is not a water hog. Um, and so this one, Mr. Barbridge was very clear, could not exceed our allocation. So I think we're good on that. We have outside power. Um, I mean, I, Alan, I both listened to what your big concerns were, the power company and the water. We've met both of those. The Entrada data center does not adversely impact the local utility for the water use. I'm happy to answer questions. I mean, we're really excited about the data center.
Thank you.
The op, the, the option that we might get a data center.
And I should add, just for everybody's knowledge, we have met and, and with them, and they did explain that to me, but I want this to be open and transparent. I want everybody to know about it, not just me, because I'm the supervisor for that district. I felt it was important that everybody knows that, you know, there has been, they've presented it. I know what it is. I've seen it and I've, I've looked at it, but I wanted everybody in the public to know about it. That in this particular case, everything has been done that I can see that can be done to facilitate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Heard that motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I appear to have it, do have it, so we're, thank you. Moved item, uh, number fifty, open the public hearing, discussion and possible action. Approve and authorize the chairman of the board of supervisors to execute change order number thirty-nine to the Surbat landfill operations contract agreement with Gambi three sixty of Arizona. Establishing adjusted gate rates effective January first, twenty twenty-six for calendar year twenty twenty-six. And implementing waste tire collection site payments, twenty twenty-five economic alignment and future adjustments in accordance with the year-over-year change of the CPI U to the current year's operating cost. We have nobody signed up to speak on item number fifty during public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item number fifty during the public hearing? Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public hearing on item number fifty. I'd open it up to discussion or a motion. Supervisor Martin.
Yes, this is in my district, and, and what I'd like to do is I'd like this to be delayed for another month. I want to go over with the folks out at Gambi, their proposal there. I haven't seen all of it. I've seen some of it, but I want to see all of it before we, we approve it.
Is that a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, yes, to put it to the January.
I'm sorry, the fifth?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Second.
Additional discussion?
Chair.
Uh, Director Holter, yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you, and Supervisor Martin. Um, I believe these gate rates are, this is an annual gate rate change. It's, it's not dependent on the operator. And it, this particular operator is the one that, uh, has been there for quite some time at, at the Surbat landfill. But, uh, we set a public hearing, I think sixty days ago, to change these, um, gate rates, and I believe they have to go in effect prior to, uh, the, the beginning of next year, and that's why we're doing it, um, at this meeting today. We receive, uh, the CPI rate. It's a, it's the rate that's across the board through landfills on this, um, gate rates. So I believe we would, we need to have the, the changes prior to the beginning of the year.
Can I ask Attorney Davis a question regarding this, um, since the? Oh, I'm sorry, Manager Elters, I didn't see that you looked right out.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Um, it is, uh, it is in the contract. There is an existing formula in the contract that the board awarded that calls for updating the gate, uh, rate, the gate fees annually based on CPI. It's literally laid out in the contract, and it's not the first year or the second year. It's an ongoing practice. And it's in the county's residents' best interest to have it in place at the beginning of the year. And it's been through, um, a, uh, review process, so our recommendation to use the board, given the fact that this is not a first year, would be to, uh, to approve it as requested, um, since it is built, it's a formula built in the contract.
Thank you for that, Manager Elters. Supervisor Martin, does that change your motion?
Well, it, it kind of does, but I had met with them prior in the early part of the year, but I haven't met with them recently to, to go over this, but it, this was part of an annual deal. If it is in fact established, as is what you're saying, and I absolutely understand it, then there probably would not be the necessity for me to meet with them again to go over this since it's already established. So if it's okay with everyone, I'll remove my motion.
You need Supervisor. Second first?
The request is Supervisor Martin, I'll remove my second.
Thank you.
And with that, I would make a motion that we approve.
Heard that motion. Do I have a second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I appear to have it, do have it, so we're, thank you. We'll open the public hearing at item number fifty-one. Discussion and possible action, approve and authorize the chairman of the board of supervisors to adjust the gate rate structure for the Mojave Valley landfill operations contract agreement with Gambi three sixty of Arizona. Establishing the twenty twenty-six adjusted gate rates effective January first, twenty twenty-six, including the required CPI U, uh, annual operating cost adjustment and the capital cost recovery components for groundwater monitoring wells and septic pond construction, and to implement waste tire collection site payment adjustments to align the nineteen ninety-three operating rate with twenty twenty-five economic conditions, with future adjustments made annually in accordance with the over, the year-over-year, uh, CPI change. Uh, we have nobody signed up to speak during the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item number fifty-one? Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'd open it up to the board for discussion or an action.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gold, thank you.
I have a question for Director Holter.
Director Holter.
Uh, Director Holter, how are we going to fund the septic, uh, pond construction?
Mr. Chair Supervisor Gold, uh, part of this, uh, this one is a little bit different than the previous item. Uh, part of the, this item and including the CPI rate, we're also adding one dollar, uh, charge to help, um, fund the septic ponds as well as, we were just informed by ADQ that we need to implement monitoring wells at this location. Um, and so the, the one dollar additional charge will help pay for that.
So Gambi's going to build that?
The septic ponds?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's a needed thing in that area. Currently, there's no place to dump, um, except when you pump a septic tank, there's no place to dump it. Um, the drive has an exclusive contract with one, uh, pumper. So the pumpers along the river have to haul it all the way to Surbat landfill if they were going to do that.
Just as an update on that, we are very close to going out for bid for that, for that item.
Sounds good. Good job. Thank you. Motion to approve.
Heard that motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. I appear to have it, do have it, so we're. We will move to the public hearing on item number fifty-two. Discussion and possible action, approve and adopt a new modified fee schedule for Mojave County parks and the Mojave County fairgrounds effective January first, twenty twenty-six. We have nobody signed up to speak during the public hearing on item number fifty-two. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item number fifty-two for the public hearing? Going once. Going twice. I'm going to close the public hearing on item number fifty-two. Open it up to the board. All right. Silence your cell phone, that'd be great. Here's Letman.
So Director Holter, come on over. I have some questions about this item on the fee schedule. I wanted to refer to, uh, page thirteen in the backup, which is the fee schedule for Davis Camp. I'll let you go to that first. And while we're doing that, I would, do we have an idea of the overall impact on additional revenue that'll be raised by these fee increases combined with some fee decreases that are in the schedule?
Chairman Langenfeldter, members of the board, Supervisor Letman, um, the, uh, and this has been an annual, um, thing that we have brought, uh, before the board, uh, revisions in our park fees. I should lead off by stating that the, uh, parks entrance fees as well as lodging fees are going to be subject to, uh, the DPD tax. Uh, we were advised in the fall, uh, from the Department of Revenue, uh, of that, and as a result, we are including all of the taxes and related, say, credit card fees, uh, in our new fees. Uh, so that's why you see some of the changes there. But to get to your question, and it's a very good one, um, the parks, uh, coming out of the pandemic era uh, has seen a increased competition and, uh, quite frankly, our revenues have been, uh, stable, uh, yet slightly declining. Uh, so what we're seeking here is a, a mix of fees that probably emphasize more attendance, uh, to, to the park by and large. And in the case of Davis Camp, uh, the, uh, summer, um, uh, the summer weekends as well as the, uh, the holiday weekends at Davis Camp, uh, we are shifting now from a, uh, per-person fee, twenty dollars, to a per-vehicle fee of thirty-five dollars. So our intent here is to get more attendance in on the weekends, like we had experienced, uh, during the pandemic. And that we think, combined with the lower, uh, entry fee, will, uh, will, will lead to a higher revenue.
Yeah, uh, clearly the, the South Beach, uh, fee was top of my list, looking at that page. Um, so we're going from twenty dollars for a vehicle for up to thirty-five dollars. So, and that's any day of the week during the summer, correct?
Um, that would be, uh, for the summer entries, which I believe should be, uh, uh, Friday, Saturday, and then it goes back to half price on, on Sunday.
Okay. So your competition for this obviously is a Bullhead City, uh, park two miles down the road that is significantly improved and has many, many things to offer, just like Davis Camp does. Is it a good idea to raise this fee by seventy-five percent?
Great question, and I must emphasize that we are shifting from a per-person fee to a per-vehicle fee. Uh, so we typically see, uh, upwards of four persons in a vehicle, so essentially we're going from twenty dollars per person previously to as little as eight dollars and seventy-five cents per person, given that we're only charging for the vehicle.
Okay, so the overall impact of these fees should be to increase the revenue coming out of Davis Camp, which is, we all know, is financing most of the county park system. That'd be safe to say. I was actually pleased to see the change for the renting of the Oleander area, which I, I think has been ridiculously underpriced. Okay, I mean, even several people have used it, said, you're not charging us enough. So you're going, you went from three hundred dollars in twenty-four to two hundred dollars in twenty-five, and now it's going up to five hundred and fifty dollars to rent that area for a day, correct?
That is correct.
And you don't think you're going to have resistance of any kind to that price?
Um, our staff, uh, who has, uh, a lot of direct, uh, impact, uh, or direct, uh, you know, uh, uh, you know, uh, discussions with, with those that have rented it, uh, they feel quite confident that we can sustain that, that level of use.
Okay. And I think the vacation home prices are, are modest. Okay, certainly appropriate. At, at what point during the course of the, as the, we kick into summer season and these prices really go into effect, at what point would you start doing analysis and saying, we might have the wrong price here? Okay, when, when does that kick in?
I often do that myself, Supervisor Letman, and, and that would probably come, uh, more toward the middle of the latter part of June, uh, after we see the first holiday week, Memorial Day, and we get a few, uh, weekends in June, uh, behind us. I, I think that gives us a, a good read in terms of, uh, what we might expect to July and August.
Okay, because that critical summer period obviously is done. To about.
Another thing with Davis Camp, I should emphasize, and this is just a fact of the matter, it was under construction, but we will have a brand-new, and it is complete, a brand-new uh, boat launch and dock facility that was really hampering, you know, some of the, uh, public interest, uh, in, uh, coming to South Beach and, and launching their watercraft. Yes, they could still launch jet skis and small watercraft, but it was a challenge, and that's been completely resolved now with our brand-new dock.
Okay, and I'm assuming as you prepare your budget for the upcoming fiscal year, that obviously these price increases are going to be reflected into the revenue picture for Davis Camp. Do we have any idea yet what kind of increase in revenue you're planning ballpark?
Um, Chairman Langenfeldter, Supervisor Letman, yes, I have actually done a preliminary budget for the park and Davis Camp. Uh, we are actually seeing it at this point level. Um, we're not forecasting a, an increase, uh, year-over-year, uh, but that's because we like to conservatively budget.
Okay, we have a lot of needs in our parks and rec system. But obviously, this particular facility helps finance.
I, I share your, your concerns, and, and in the past, uh, we have seen those revenue spikes that we saw during the pandemic period, uh, and even into twenty twenty-two, we were able to successfully reinvest them into capital improvements for the park, namely the water system.
Yeah, again, obviously, we both agree, and end objective here is to get more people into our park. I agree. Thanks.
For the comments, Supervisor Martin, thank you.
Just to comment, Supervisor Letman, don't forget about Walupi. Walupi Mountain Park does contribute significantly to our park budget. Not as much as, as, as Davis, but I just want that on record.
I, I acknowledge your point of view, and by the way, I'm also completely in support of, of doing things to help that park over in Golden Valley too, which is, needs a lot of work.
I, and I, and I agree with you. The idea is to get more people to utilize our park, and this, this is probably the way to do it.
Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Gold, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Lotosky, isn't Walupi Mountain Park the park we cannot move money out of to the other park? Chairman Langenfeldter, Supervisor Gold, uh, we don't necessarily have a moratorium on whether we can move money out of the park. It's really Davis Camp, our, our lease with the federal government for Davis Camp, uh, does encourage us to, uh, uh, price, uh, the various fees, entry fees and, and, and lodging, et cetera, you know, at a level where, um, you know, it, it, it takes care of our expenses at Davis Camp. Davis Camp is actually, uh, the park that runs a, a Serp and, and does, uh, uh, carry, uh, especially the, uh, uh, community park, uh, which, uh, don't really incur any revenue generation. But, uh, some of the excess monies at Davis Camp does support our public work, I suppose, our park administration. I thought, so it's Walupi Mountain Park that we can't move money out of to the other park? I believe one of the two of them, we were, we, because of the way that we obtained it, we were limited on whether it could be revenue generating for the rest of the park. That would be more Davis Camp. Supervisor Gold, that because we have a lease with BOR, uh, Walupi Mountain Park is a, a fee titled to Mojave County. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Chairman. Uh, Supervisor Letman.
I had one, uh, one additional question. I think I noticed somewhere in the fee schedule that you had a, a fee set up for Camp Levy Levy up in Walupi Mountain Park. Is that being used? Are, are we actually renting out that facility at all?
Um, Chairman Langenfeldter, Supervisor Letman, uh, that is anticipated to, uh, be put back into operation and access, uh, in the, uh, in the late spring of next year, uh, for the summer use.
Oh, good.
Right now, we're in the midst of, uh, doing some renovations, uh, particularly the access road and waters.
Director Lotosky, do we actively market any, any of our parks with the goal of, of trying to promote them as far as Walupi Mountain Park, Davis Camp, the other, the other camps or the other parks? Do we market them at any level?
Uh, yes, uh, Supervisor, Chairman Langenfeldter, uh, we do, uh, uh, market the parks, uh, through, uh, local radio and, and media. Uh, on some occasions, and this is actually, uh, as part of some of the permissions in our park fees, that the park administrator, you know, can provide, uh, you know, certain, uh, items, uh, for giveaway, giveaways, et cetera, in exchange for, uh, media, uh, of, of regional parks.
I just remember, uh, my first year as a county supervisor was the pandemic and obviously Clark County, Nevada shut everything down, and that enabled me to snag away, uh, Snore Off-Road Racing Event. They had a, a race here in the Kingman area. They used our park and they used our fairgrounds for their.
for their annual awards dinner. Just wondering if we're still trying to do stuff like that, because that brings in outside tax money.
Yeah, we're continuing to promote the park.
Any additional questions? Entertaining motion. Thank you, I have a motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Regular agenda, item number 53, for information only. Update project progress and financing for the design and construction of new fire booster pumps and associated electrical and mechanical upgrades for the Horizon Six Water System. Director Lotosky.
I will be brief in this presentation, but it is timely that I provide the board an update on the progress of our funding application, as well as the project going forward to upgrade the, upgrade the Horizon Six Water System for fire build. The system was undertaken through the improvement district formation in addition to incur expense in the nine, early 1980s by the district property owners themselves. And since the county took over operation in approximately 1997, we have maintained the system as a status quo. The system operates in such a manner that we receive water direct from the city Lake Havasu City, and it's delivered to a booster station. That booster station is currently only configured with booster pumps that are rated to provide for basically domestic water delivery. And what you see here in the photo is actually a photo from 2017, when we replaced all of those booster pumps. At that same time, you know, we were aware of the, of the limitations of that booster station to provide fire flow. It's just not how the system was originally constructed, but at that time in 2017, the cost was just cost prohibitive for the monies that the Horizon Six had on account. So the purpose, of course, of this project is to upgrade the booster station by providing the new fire booster pump to provide for the minimum flow and the pressure requirements of the, of the city Lake Havasu City. So moving forward in February, we identified and applied for a water supply development refund, revolving fund grant. We first applied for it as a grant, and it's administered, of course, by the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, WIFA. We proposed a $1,800,000 application for grant funds. WIFA did an exhaustive review of our grant, particularly on the socioeconomics of Horizon Six, and they landed on a financial index score of Horizon Six qualifying for any financial funding of being 40% grant and 60% loan. This photo actually shows the recent completion of the Horizon Six Water Line replacement, where we replaced 25% of the water line. But most notably, we stepped in as county staff and had the Window Rock Road, one of the main junction lines, upsized to a 16 inch water line to provide for the ability to convey future flows at, at fire flow rate that, so if the fire booster pump came in, we had the water line upgrade already in place, and that's already complete. So fast forward to July, and the board accepted a $5,000 appropriation of state funds for the very purpose of the fire booster pump upgrade. So when you, when I noted in the previous slide that we qualified, the district qualified for 40% grant funding, this $500,000, and then we identified another $25,000 in cash reserves from Horizon Six. We considered that to be the amount of money that we had available to pay back the loan if the finance package was made available to us. So that would leave with the 40-60 split, a $350,000 grant and $525,000 loan. So we went back to WIFA and amended our application for an $875,000 financing pack. That was still, in our opinion, a sufficient amount of money to obtain the, and construct, design and construct the fire booster, and still leave us with a nominal amount of money for contingency or potentially, you know, fire hydrant replacement, et cetera. So where we stand today, this is my final slide, WIFA is moving our application through the approval process. We are number 18 of projects ranked across the state for funding, but the very encouraging news is on October 28th, the Water Supply Development Committee unanimously approved the financial package that we, we applied for. And looking ahead on December 10th, next week, Wednesday, the WIFA Board of Directors will be meeting to consider our financial tax. If the WIFA Board approves, and I would hope and expect that they would, then we can proceed with the, the design and construction of the project. The schedule of that, as far as I see it, should be approximately just over about a year. I'd say give it between about 12 to 15 months. We already have a consultant that has drawn up the scope of work to perform the design. They estimated, they independently estimated, I, I think about a 12 month period, 12 to 13 month period. They may have a little bit underestimated the bid process when we go and bid for structure, but, but all in all, it should be about 12 to 15 month process once we get the finance package in place.
Thank you, Director. Supervisor Martin.
Steve, would you go back to first slide, please? What's the one with the money?
This was the original one in February.
Yeah. They said board authorizes a million 80,000. Should that be 800,000?
$1,080,000 application, that's what we originally applied.
And we ended up with, what did we end up?
So then we downsized the application, if I go to this slide, actually, I'm sorry, this slide, we downsized the application to $575,000, and we did that only because WIFA came back and said that the financial index score of Horizon Six was only qualified for 40% grant fund. So $875,000 means that the district would be responsible for a $525,000 loan, but we align that perfectly with the state appropriation of $500,000, and the district has had, has been accruing positive cash reserves every budget year. So we had $25,000 that we felt comfortable with putting towards that.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Barelli, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. When, when do we have to start paying back the loan? Is it after the construction ending?
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Barelli, I'm looking forward to seeing those specific terms and conditions when the finance documents get returned to us. It would be my anticipation that it would probably start with the first reimbursement of expenses incurred. So as we, I, I assume we will be entitled to invoice WIFA with regard to our consultant design fees, et cetera, and my expectation would be perhaps the, the loan would start, you know, on or on when we seek our first reimbursement. So there'll be design reimbursements and construction.
Right, but with the, with the money that we have to borrow, we have to, when do we start paying that, that back, that principal?
I would again have to defer to the loan, loan documents that come forward. I'm not sure if they're going to start in the loan term when they, when WIFA provides us with the funding for design. I suspect that that's going to be the case, that it'll be kind of a rolling term.
In this case, it's moot, because we already have the money to take care of the debt.
We already have the loan money, loan repayment.
Supervisor Gold, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Lotosky, at, at some point, I'm assuming that the board of supervisors sitting as the Horizon Six Improvement District Board will have to determine whether we're going to recover that, the money to repay that loan through a rate increase or through a fee.
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gold, we will have the loan repayment funds on account. We actually are going to have them on account when the state completes their $500,000 appropriation. It's coming to us in quarters right now, but by the end of FY '26, we will have the full $500,000 on account to repay the loan. So we do not anticipate any increases to the maintenance fee or anything for the district.
So on that chart you showed, it said loan amount. So we're getting the money to pay that amount back from where?
We will be received, we are, we will be using the, the appropriation of the $500,000 from the state as the funds to repay the loan.
So the money's going to come from the state, then?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then we also added $25,000 of district funds for even 525,000.
Okay.
There will be interest, there'll be an interest component to this loan, of course, with what would be a low interest loan. It would be our anticipation that that would be more or less offset. I, I won't say for definite if it's going to be, you know, one for one offset, but, you know, the county does accrue interest, of course, on its cash reserves. So this $525,000 that we will be having on account accrues interest, and we would hope that that would offset the interest charge by what.
So if it doesn't, then we're going to have to look at a, at a rate increase or a fee to the, to the water, the property owners in that area?
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gold, it may be so nominal that the district already has sufficient cash reserves. Its cash reserves are, are over $100,000, right? It's actually more than $100,000, but I don't want to count the state appropriation.
Okay, because I thought you said it was 25 grand.
We, we set aside, and, and the board already approved a $25,000 out of the cash reserves for the loan repayment fund. But the district also has a fairly substantial amount of additional cash reserves if we had that little nominal additional cost because of the.
Thank you.
Other questions? So, open up to a motion. Oh, information, excuse me, my apologies. Thank you, Director Lotosky, appreciate that. We'll move to item number 54.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gold.
I move that the county attorney's office take the advice received from the board of supervisors in executive session.
I'll second that. That motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Thank you very much. Item number 55, discussion, possible action. Approve or deny transfer of $16,000 from general fund contingency to Serbat Constable for travel expenses. Director Mornian.
Good morning, Chairman Lingefelter, board members. Let me give you a little bit of background on this item. As you're aware, we, we do a quarterly review of all the departmental budgets. During the Q1 FY '26 review, I flagged the Serbat precinct for some further looking into, because their travel expenses through the first three months of the year were quite a bit higher than they have been in prior years. In the course of looking into that, I ran some analysis on their first four months of data. You may or may not be aware that all of our constables submit what are called daily activity logs to the clerk of the board as well as to finance. That tracks which cases they are working and attempting to serve paperwork on, and they also include how many miles they are incurring in those attempts on service. They are reimbursed for the miles that they drive in the course of conducting constable business. I'll just say that, looking at that data, and I provided it in the backup, there are quite a few cases that have what appeared to me to be an abnormally high number of attempts of service. In speaking with the presiding constable, as well as with the courts, the general consensus that was that about three to five attempts at service is what would be considered normal. And after that, the constables generally would go back to the court and say, we've made a reasonable attempt. Can the court, can the judge approve either alternate service, so serving via certified mail, something like that, or the constables in certain cases can file a affidavit of non-service that basically says they made an effort, they weren't able to, and now they're filing paperwork with the court. Just a couple of things to, to be aware of is that the Serbat Constable's travel budget was already improve, approved, or, sorry, increased from last year. It was $9,000 last year, increased to $10,500 this year. As of the end of October, one third of the way through the fiscal year, about 93% of that travel budget had been used up. The bulk of that was mileage reimbursement requests. In the backup, you also see, you know, quite a few cases that have 10, 15, all the way up to 21 attempts at service. And so that is what really led to this coming before the board. I don't have the authority to transfer general fund contingency money without the board's approval. I thought it best to make you all aware of it and let you hear from the constable. Constable Carmen is here to provide some justification. Before I call him up, I will just say that the $16,000 amount is what he requested of me. I would recommend that the board approve a lesser amount if they feel that that is justified, of $8,000, basically $1,000 for each month remaining in the fiscal year. And if the constable needs to come back to the board again before the end of the fiscal year, then that would be the course of action. The last thing I want to say is that about a third of the cases involved here that have a high number of attempts of service are orders of protection. Those are obtained by the constables using a system called AZ Point. In speaking with the presiding constable, it appears that Constable Carmen has not been logging in AZ Point all of these attempts at service. That's something Constable Hogard made me aware of, and I thought it was germane to the discussion and make you aware of that. And so my recommendation was if the board feels that the constable has justified the request for additional funds, that you approve 8,000, not 16,000. And with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions or call, call Constable Carmen up to speak with the board.
Any questions for Director Mornian before we call up the constable? Let's, let's have the constable come up.
Morning, Chairman. Morning.
I think that Director Mornian said you were going to provide us some additional background on this.
Correct. As far as it goes with logging in, I have had to have the courts, something is wrong with my login information to get into the state system. So I, I can't even pull up, so the courts have to print out all of my orders of protection right now. I'm in the process of trying to get that nullified with state. As far as it goes for the other cases that have the higher ends, so I do know as far as constables that are doing this, Constable Greep and myself have started taking the cases that are about to go to warrant status for any individual in the county out of the justice court. We have taken those over and started doing those. I was treating those as an order of protection, because if it doesn't get served and they don't show up to court, these individuals get warrants put out for their arrests to go, to end up going to jail. So we were, at least I was trying to run them up until their court date to get it served. Since Luke and I had our discussion, I did have a meeting with Judge Huerta and sat down with him, asking him with those, because I discussed the situation at hand after the conversation with Luke, and he stated that we are allowed to go try it, and if we don't the second time, if they don't answer the door, that we are allowed to just post it, and we don't even have to do a certified mailing for that. So that, allowing us to do that is going to drop down the mileage significantly on that. But as far as orders of protection go, injunction against harassment, those are valid for a year to be served. And like I discussed with Luke prior to this, was that I typically try them three, four times, they might sit there, and then if I get a text message, a phone call, an email from the individual who filed the case giving me any kind of more information, then that gets thrown back into my queue to be worked again, because we are not even allowed to transfer them out anymore. Last year and previous years, after we did three, four attempts, those orders of protection got transferred to the sheriff's department as they were dead, pretty much dead accounts. We are no longer allowed to do that, those have to sit in our queue now. So that's how that. Do you have any questions?
Open up to the board for discussion. Open up to the board for discussion.
So I have a question, so I get it on the orders of protection, so there was a subpoena that you attempted to serve fifteen times. Why?
So if it's, if it's in an area that I'm already going to, and I'm going to be driving past that, driving around that, I'm going to throw it back in my queue if it's still a valid thing. If I, if I'm driving past that area, because my area is so vast, I co, I cover almost forty-two hundred square miles of Mojave County.
Well, I, I guess, let me approach it a different way. So a subpoena has time value to it, I, I would assume, I mean, I'm not a court officer of the court. So I'm assuming, so attempts, um, one through fourteen, you're failing because you can't reach the person you need to serve the subpoena to. Aren't we losing the time value of that subpoena to the court itself? I mean, why not after two or three attempts say, I can't do this? There's got to be a faster way to get this subpoena because that subpoena may be for a very important appearance in front of a court officer, a judge, probation, anybody.
Supervisor Letman, so for a subpoena for me, I either serve them or don't serve. So they're either served to somebody there that lives at that property, or an affidavit of non-service is turned in. So I typically wait to put in my affidavit of non-service on something until a day or two before the court date. I will hold on to those. That way, if, let's say, I get a subpoena that their court date's not until February first, okay? And I got that today, I go and I try it three, four, five times. But then January second, I get another, another item to serve, that's five minutes from there. I'm going to throw that back into my, into my queue, since I'm going all the way out to White Hills or wherever I'm going. And that one's out in White Hills, and I have a new one out there, now I'm going to go serve that one, and now that one's going to get served again.
Yeah, again, I think you're missing my point, which is the time value of, and ditto on a summons or a complaint, a summons saying, show up somewhere, there is absolute time value to that. And my point on, on this one summons, fourteen attempts, okay, to deliver a summons, um, at some point, we're going to come up with another method, correct or not correct?
And supervisor, I just, I did explain to you that I had a meeting with Judge Huerta that he is allowing those to be posted.
Okay.
So after, after I attempt it a second time now, on my second attempt, I can tape that to a door. He says, I do not even, I don't even have to send it by mail. Because that was another concern too, because every time I send anything by mail, whether, so if it's a summons, if it's, if it's one page, I'm, I'm looking at ten seventy-seven. Every time I send out a mail. So I'm looking for anywhere from ten dollars and seventy-seven cents out of my funding for that up to the, probably the biggest one I've ever done is around eighteen to twenty dollars, depending on the size of the packet. So, um, getting that, like I told Luke as well, is going to drop significant mileage as well, the fact that the presiding justice of the peace stated I can post.
So how, how would you handle these injunctions against harassment in the future?
I mean, injunction against harassment cannot be posted, they cannot be posted, I cannot give them to anybody else. Those have to be served one, to the person hand to hand, there is no discrepancies in that at all. That's the same with an order of protection.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Supervisor Gold, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, when you're calculating mileage, you had your, uh, your trip to White Hills, is it the actual mileage that you travel? Or since you're making two, two services, do you, do you end up booking that as two trips?
No, so the way I do it is, so if I got, let's just say at fifteen different items I'm trying to get served that day, okay? So I'll, I'll plug it in to the system, and then I will have it go from my point A, which is from the courthouse, whether it be from courthouse to courthouse or courthouse to, to the end of my being home, okay? The end of my route being home. I plug it in and I have it take me the quickest, the quickest route. So it, it's taking me from A, B, C, D, E, F, G like, like that, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not logging miles from the courthouse to this one, and then again, the courthouse to this one. I don't, I don't add the mileage per se as it gets charged, as the county charges. The county, when it comes to my fees, it charges from the courthouse to the address. Where it comes from my mileage, it goes, I start at, wherever I start at, I go to my first stop. Let's say that's fifteen miles, and then from that stop, my next stop is seven miles. So now we're adding seven miles to that, and ten miles.
So your, your mileage reimbursement is the actual miles that you travel in the course of your day when you're out making service?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so even though the, the fee is based on the distance from the courthouse to the, to the residence, let's say.
Correct.
So it's your billing for the actual mileage then?
Correct.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Other questions? Supervisor Martin, thank you.
You, you have asked for sixteen thousand dollars, but you met with Luke, and Luke is asking for eight thousand dollars. Are you still asking for sixteen thousand dollars, or do you agree with Luke?
I mean, I can't, I can't the, the issue with, with us and our driving as constables is that there can be months where it does drop down. So I start, I started doing the, the warrants, the pre-warrants back in May. So that, back in May is when my mileage started increasing. So I would probably say whatever the, the mileage from those are, I'll be able to drop that down probably just from those cases, which were a lot of the summonses that Supervisor Letman was speaking of, um, down probably seventy-five percent, since I'm only going to be doing two attempts there.
If, from what I heard from Luke was, instead of attempting fifteen to twenty times, three to five, and then close it out. Is that not the right way to do that, rather than keep adding in these additional attempts? Because like Supervisor Letman said, these things are time sensitive, you know, I mean, going back, and especially when the date is there, uh, it just seemed repetitious to me. And like I say, and I, I don't know that you can justify an additional eight thousand dollars. I mean, if you're a manager, if I'm a manager and I got a budget, I'm going to look at the schedule and say, okay, you know, I'm going to average this amount per month, and you use ninety-three percent of your annual budget in a third of a year. I, I don't know whether that means you need to reevaluate what you're doing and how you're doing it, but I don't know how the board feels about just continually increasing funds for this that it appears nobody else is doing, I, I don't know, I don't know that for a fact, but that's what it's looking like. And, and like I said, just a direct answer, would you agree that supervisor or that director um, Mornian recommends eight thousand dollars at this point is a judicious use of the contingency fund rather than approving sixteen thousand blank?
I mean, I, I agree with, with Luke that we do the eight thousand, and then if we have to cross that that path down the road, we can cross it again later that way. I, I have zero issues with that.
Okay, alright.
Supervisor Barrelli.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, Constable, I mean, it was said that basically your, your, um, time management was kind of like in question, because trying to budget, and do you have any, uh, control over the, uh, the court's docket and how many cases they have?
No, I do not.
You have, you have no control on how many warrants and subpoenas that, that the court's going to hand to you to, to issue out?
That is correct, I do not.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gold, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, sir, you spoke of, that you started doing service on, uh, for warrants? That, that is what if something is going to, what's that document?
So they, they were the summons, a lot of the summonses that are on there, so any, if you look on the documentation that Luke provided, um, any of the summonses that have the state of Arizona as the plaintiff on there, every single one of those is going to be a pre-warrant, okay? So, um, I'm sorry, can you restate, I lost my track.
So those are, those summonses are for them to appear in court, and if they don't appear in court, they're going to get a warrant?
Correct.
Those require service?
So we, they require, you can serve them, or they can, or we can post them, according to Judge Huerta, so.
The court sends them a, a letter to tell them that's happening anyway, doesn't it?
They do, yes.
So really, that, that, you're just providing a taxpayer-funded reminder service for the court, for that individual?
Or serve them while it gets put in my mailbox.
I, I would just quit doing, if they don't require service, I just wouldn't do them, because I don't, I'll bet you, since I believe the court only collects about fifteen percent of the fees that it, uh, places on people, the odds of us ever seeing the money for that service is, uh, is, would be fifteen cents on the dollar on a good day. I don't think that covers your time or your, or your mileage to go out and make that service. If, if it was me, I would just quit serving those papers because they don't require service. Thank you.
I had a question for Director Mornian. Could you briefly address the differences between fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six? I, I think you had a, some backup on that, in other words, where were we in a previous fiscal year, where are we now, and where is this headed if no changes were made?
Chairman Lincoln Felter, Supervisor Letman, specific to the Serbat Constable. If I go back to, and, and what I highlighted in the backup provided to the board was as of the end of October each year, so through the first four months of the fiscal year, FY twenty-four, uh, twenty-seven fifty roughly, uh, FY twenty-five, so last year about thirty-four hundred dollars year-to-date travel expenses, and then this year, just over nine thousand seven hundred.
We've roughly tripled it.
That's correct.
And the total for all of fiscal year twenty-four was?
The total for all of fiscal twenty-four was, uh, just under ninety-two hundred. The total for last year did spike a bit, uh, up to thirteen-four. Uh, and a, as you're all aware of, we meet with the departments, uh, in February, uh, to discuss their budget needs. Uh, it was at that time that Constable Carmen said he thought that he needed an increase in his travel budget. As I said before, we increased it from nine thousand to ten-five. You know, he, he said in May of last year was when he started, uh, doing those pre-warrant uh, services. We can see last year in May, he incurred just over a thousand dollars in travel expenses. Um, it looked like it spiked for his, his end-of-year, um, expenses, uh, just above two thousand dollars in the month. But when we roll into fiscal twenty-six, into the current year, it was fifteen hundred, it was twenty-four, it was twenty-seven, and then it was three thousand in October. So it's just been on an upward trajectory. And so what, what I'm seeing when I look at the data is that there, there needs to be a change, uh, in behavior, uh, in, in the approach. There certainly seems like there's a lot of room for some efficiency gains if the, the method is, is looked at and changed. That is why I reached out to the presiding constable, he's been a constable for many, many years, he also has a very large district understanding that the activity at the North Canyon Court versus the Serbat precinct is likely quite a bit different, uh, still, the year-over-year data shows this huge spike that is not sustainable, it, it, it doesn't appear that the Serbat Constable was even paying attention to what he had budgeted, uh, I mean, you know, if so I, I just think that there needs to be a change in the behavior, that's why I don't think that the board should approve sixteen thousand dollar transfer, we should start with something less, and if, if he's able to, uh, change his approach a bit, it sounds like meeting with Judge Huerta, he already has permission to significantly reduce some of the attempts to service for certain types of cases. Presiding Constable said there's lots of other types of cases where you can try one or two times, then go back to the court and request uh, either alternate service or file an affidavit of non-service. So it seems like there's room for improvement, uh, that's where I'm at.
Luke, I, I agree with you, uh, District One, and I know Constable for District One is, uh, Hogart. You know, District One, my district is over eighty-seven hundred miles, it's bigger than some small US states, it's enormous. And so far, he's expended, uh, twenty-nine hundred dollars for coverage of eighty-seven hundred square miles. Uh, I guess I have a policy question, I'd like to ask a policy question, because is there a policy with, I see Kips in the, in the audience, um, court administrator. Is there a policy regarding how many service attempts you have for different types of items, uh, from the courts? Um, in order to be a good partner with the county to try to keep our costs down?
Chairman Lincoln Felter, members of the board, um, there is, there's nothing written, but I was at the last limited jurisdiction judges meeting when, when they discussed this and it was brought up. And the general consensus among the justices of the peace was, you know, three to four times you attempt service, and after that, you know, there, there is a time element, there's a, why go back to the same place if nobody's there? So that was the general consensus, so, uh, you know, I appreciate, uh, the constable's enthusiasm, but I think he can cut that back. Sounds like he's talked to Judge Huerta, sounds like he can scale it back, and if you look at prior years, um, this does seem like, um, you know, he's putting in more effort than is needed and, and is helpful at this time, so.
I know the courts have been very innovative, and, and you guys have tried to employ all sorts of sort of cutting-edge things to try to minimize costs, and I appreciate that from the county's perspective. Is there any sort of an opportunity to come, put something in writing as far as a, a policy or something on this stuff, that hey, maybe?
You know, I think we can, the constables are actually working on a manual, uh, Constable Hogart put one together, I know we're, we're taking a look at it, I think that would be a good place to put some of that in there.
Process matters, and I think consistency amongst the different districts matters as well.
That's a great suggestion, I think we can, we can do that, and then that'll be helpful as new constables come on, or, or the current constables, they can look at that and use that as a reference, so.
Thank you.
Good suggestion, thank you.
Appreciate that, if you take that back to the courts.
We will, yeah.
Director Mornian, you're recommending fi, or eight, what about just five? Does that not get them where it needs to be?
Chairman Lincoln Felter, the
Can always come back.
That, that is absolutely true, I'm taking into account the fact that we, by the time I had completed my analysis and reached out, uh, spoken with the presiding constable, spoken with the courts, and then spoken with Constable Carmen, uh, most of November had already passed, so assuming there was no change in the, uh, methods by which he was conducting the constable business during the month of November, uh, it's likely that he has, you know, another high month of mileage that he's about to submit for reimbursement, so taking that into account, uh, and saying, on average, a thousand dollars for the last eight months of the fiscal year, with the understanding that November is going to be significantly more than that, I think that eight thousand, uh, there's a good chance that he would not need to return to the board and ask for more funds, that would be, uh, my hope. Uh, but we could certainly, whatever, whatever the board, uh, is inclined to authorize is what we will make available to the constable.
Thank you, Director, I'd open it up for additional discussion or motion. Supervisor Letman, thank you.
I'll go ahead and, uh, move to transfer eight thousand dollars from the general fund over to the Serbat Constable Fund for Travel Expenses. And as part of that, I would like an update, I, I would like the constable to come back and see us in February or March and give us an update on his travel expenses.
Supervisor Letman, would you consider amending your motion that when they come back, that they would have some sort of a draft policy?
Yes, so amended.
Any additional discussion? If you're not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it. Actually, you know, I'm sorry, Scotty, I'm sorry I didn't call on you, I'm sorry, I just saw your okay, this, this was fifty-five. Oh, okay, that's item number fifty-eight, I'll change that. I appear to have it, you have it sorted, we'll move to item number fifty-six, uh, do I have a motion?
I don't believe this takes action.
No motion required.
No, there is no action taken on item number fifty-six, thank you for that, Supervisor Gold. Uh, item number fifty-seven, discussion, possible action, assign board members to the various Mojave County Regional and State Boards and Commissions for the twenty-twenty-six Item number 57, discussion possible action, assign board members to the various Mojave County Regional and State Boards and Commissions for the 2026 calendar year. We have Mojave County Board of Health, we have Supervisor Gould. Currently, we have Corrections Officer Retirement Board, Supervisor Borelli, Mojave Public Safety Retirement Board, Supervisor Borelli, Mojave La Paz Workforce Board is myself. The EBT Board is Supervisor Letman. State and Regional Boards, we have the Arizona Secure Rural Schools Coalition Advisory Council. Supervisor Letman, sitting on that. Clean Colorado River Sustainability Coalition, Supervisor Gould. For now, Mojave County Supervisors Association Legislative Policy Committee, Supervisor Borelli and Assistant Backup Letman. Mojave County Water Authority is myself with Supervisor Gould, serving as alternate. WACOG, myself. WACOG Executive Board, myself. Would anybody like to change any of those, or would you like to go through those one by one? How would you like to do this?
Supervisor Letman. I would very much like to keep the Employee Benefit Trust. If there's any other supervisor that would like to take Arizona's Secure Rural Schools Coalition Advisory Council, that would be great.
Thank you for that. Anybody else want?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould?
I'm fine with my assignment.
Okay, thank you for that. Supervisor Martin, thank you. Okay. Very good. Supervisor Borelli. Besides that one change, is there any other recommended changes? Hearing none, is the board comfortable? I take a motion just to adopt with that one change?
Motion to adopt the existing committee assignments with the change of the secure schools from Supervisor Letman to Supervisor Martin.
Thank you, Supervisor Borelli, Supervisor Gould. I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do you have it? It's ordered. Thank you. We move to item number 58. Discussion, possible action, appoint a chairman of the Board of Supervisors to serve from January 1st, 2026 through December 31st of 2026. We have one person sign up to speak. We'll go and get that done. Scotty, you want to come up?
Scotty from Bullhead. Travis, I want to thank you for not having too much conflict and yelling and screaming up here throughout the year. You ran a pretty darn good ship. I mean, it's a public meeting you're gonna have conflict. That goes without saying. I served nine years on a board, and I was the only Republican. But it was for the school kids. So it was easy to bring that up. It's for the kids, not your damn Republicans or your damn Democrats. It was for the kids, so that was pretty easy. We still scream, but. This brings me to where last year where Hildy was running this fiasco. I've never seen her more screwed up than how she ran this board last year. We requested item to be, you know, to talk on the agenda. We fill out the paper. And we run it through Laura, and it'd get to your desk, Hildy's desk there. When it came to that item, she'd go to the bathroom. Jean Bishop would trash it and not call us several times, several, several times, and just me, several other people also, which I'm not going to name. You guys were here with Bob Beffert and her, bringing religion into this. He was one that she would trash. She, as soon as his name was up next, boom, she was behind that podium then. So when it came to the subject of this item, Ron Gould was supposed to be the chairman. It was not by law. I don't think you guys have a process, a legal one written in stone. It was just, he was next. And Hildy and Jean Bishop, I think, had this set up and violated an open meeting law because they got together and discussed this. And they made you the chairman. Now, I know you're not going to vote against yourself. I'm not accusing you of anything. But I was sitting right here. So I didn't hold that against you, but I believe they set this up where Ron was not allowed to be chairman. And that's a violation of the open meeting law. And I don't really care, Hildy, if you like me or not, compared to what you did to me in the last city council meeting in Bullhead. She got right in my face. She come up behind me. I was sitting there reading stuff. And so I'm going, I went to talk about getting an order of harassment against her. I did report it, so it's on record, Hildy. You come at me again and get right in my face again and laugh at me.
Let's keep it to the item if we could, Scotty.
Yeah, well, I think Ron needs to be the next chairman. I don't know. Does Valerie approve that? With all the work she's gonna have to do?
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate those words. I view this as no one supervisor is more powerful than any other. We all have, we all have one vote and equal responsibility, and that's the way I see this. There's a lot more work to be the chairman, but it's, we're all the same up here. Is there anybody else I wish to speak on item number 58? I'd open up to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would actually like to echo some of the words of Scotty. I think you've done a terrific job in running these meetings. I myself, I have no desire to be chairman of the Board of Supervisors over the next three or seven years, whatever it's going to be, just doesn't interest me at all. But I very much enjoyed the meetings you've run, and I would like to, hope you would entertain returning, okay, again, for another year as our chairman of the Board of Supervisors. So I'd like to go ahead and make that motion.
Heard that motion. Mr. Chairman, I second that motion. Okay, we have a motion. A second. We'll open it up to discussion. Supervisor Martin.
I agree 100%.
Is there any other discussion? Supervisor Gould, thank you.
I agree. You've done a great job as chairman. In the past, we've rotated chairman. Generally, you rotated through the order of districts is how they did until we got out of sequence a couple. And I think it's good to give everybody an opportunity. So I'm going to take load off. Chairman, because we signed the supervisor sale deeds and the tax lien deeds. But that it takes up, I know, I think I signed 3,600. I think Supervisor Johnson was here, he did 6,000. But it evens the workload out, so that's just something.
I agree wholeheartedly.
Mr. Chairman. Just to be clear, my preference isn't directed at Supervisor Gould. He does a terrific job, excellent supervisor. I just, I've enjoyed the last year. The background I come out of, I see no need to change. Let's keep moving forward with these calm, well-run meetings. It's very much appreciated.
Supervisor Borelli.
Mr. Chairman, and to that point, what Supervisor Gould said about signing all these documents, unfortunately, the word auto pen is taboo now. It would be nice if some of those routine documents can be can be done, but I concur with Supervisor Letman.
Well, I think that every district, I think our board is a really good board. I'm thankful for the board that we have. I'm thankful for the people, our citizens of Mojave County for electing those that are on this board. It's been a good board to work with over the last year. And every single one of our board members is a strong board member. I'm thankful for that. And I would just like to make sure that our board continues to work well together. I think we've worked well together. Previous board members have attacked, and it's just been, there's been some things that haven't been great. So I've appreciated this board and the mutual respect that everybody maintains with the citizens and then also with ourself and the public as well, so. Any other discussion? I'll call one more time and otherwise.
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming you accept the nomination to be repeat?
I agree with Supervisor Gould that it's great to rotate, but I would I would do it again if the majority of the board wants me to do it again. And I just see it as, again, we all have one vote and equal responsibility on this board as any supervisor.
Roll call vote. Supervisor Letman?
Yes.
Supervisor Borelli? Supervisor Martin?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Aye.
Chairman Lingonfelter?
Because all the other four voted aye, I'll vote aye.
It passes. Thank you, Chair.
Well, I could. Item number 59, discussion possible action regarding appoint a vice chairman of the Board of Supervisors to serve January 1st, 2026 through December 31st of 2026. I'd open it up to the board.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Borelli.
Supervisor Gould brought it up, a good point that these usually rotate, and they used to traditionally rotate by by district. And, you know, they always say, look for your, always train your replacement. And I think it would be good training for Supervisor Letman to be the vice chair to eventually maybe put him in and punish him and putting him as a chairman someday. And I'd like to nominate Supervisor Letman as the vice chair.
Mr. Chairman.
His seat next to him would be a great mentor.
Thank you, Supervisor Letman.
That's fine. I'd be willing to perform that as long as you understand I really have no desire to move on up to the chairman of the Board of Supervisors. None, zero. But I, you know, that's what you want, that's fine.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Additional discussion, please. Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Vice Chair, Supervisor Letman?
Yes.
Supervisor Borelli?
Aye.
Supervisor Martin?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Aye.
Chairman Lingonfelter?
Aye.
Five to zero to passes.
Thank you, board. That concludes the agenda. We'll move on to the call to the public. Scotty McClure, did you want to speak during Call to the Public? Happy holidays, Scotty. Kenny works.
Kenny Works, Yucca, Arizona, Hakapolita. Hakapolita was the Finnish battle cry as they fought two wars against the Soviet Union. Finland, Finland, Finland's borders were drawn in the aftermath of World War I when the newly independent Finnish Republic declared December 6, 1917, found itself adjacent to the revolutionary Soviet state determined to export communism. Finland's alignment with Germany in 1941 was motivated by the Soviet threat and a desire to reclaim their lands seized by the Soviets. Three days after Germany launched Operation Barbarossa, which is before the United States entered the war, and invaded the Soviet Union, Finland declared war on the Soviet Union, beginning what is now known as the Continuation War. The Finns initially succeeded in driving the Soviets from the territories stolen during the Winter War. However, they again faced simply overwhelming numbers while they inflicted some 944,000 casualties on the Soviets while sustaining some 225,000 signed an armistice in September 1944. Even after the 44 armistice, the Soviets retained a military base at the Porkarke Peninsula in the Gulf of Finland and clear, a clear reminder that the deviation from Moscow's wishes would be punished with renewed occupation. The Soviets-backed Finnish Communist Party perceived steady financial subsidies estimated at some 2 million rubles per year to keep the loyalist bloc in the Finnish parliament. This financial dependence ensured that the SKP, which is the the Finnish Communist Party, could block any legislation perceived as hostile to Soviet interests, effectively subverting Finnish democratic autonomy. I think that what the Finns went through during the 20th century shouldn't be allowed. They say that we shouldn't have, be a sheriff, we shouldn't be the keepers of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Stephen Robinson.
Stephen Robinson, Golden Valley. Well, in keeping with the historical narrative that was started, I'm putting this movie up here. I am purchasing this movie for each one of the board members.
Please.
Pardon?
I was asking the IT booth to put the screen up here.
This movie is called The American Miracle. Our Nation Is No Accident. Where is it focused on?
Yeah. Thank you, Roxanne. I appreciate that. It's a technical difficulty right there.
Oh.
There we go.
Okay. Well, if I'd have known it was that, I would have done it myself. Okay, I get my sec, no.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you. This movie was based on a book written by Michael Medved in 2016 where he describes God's hand on our country, beginning with the nation of, you know, becoming a nation, but he focuses on General Washington, how God protected him many times. He then focuses on the, he focuses on the way God worked in creating our constitution when there was vicious battles, incredibly divisive terms. And so I'm going to pray that each one of you will watch this movie when you get it. I've ordered it and I will be sent in, making sure it gets to all five supervisors. So that's my first point. I made that my first point after what Kenny did because what I wanted to also address, since I unfortunately arrived too late to speak on item 49, I will share some pertinent facts. Number one, under 2% of the available water in the Sacramento Aquifer is currently being used. Less than 6,000 acre feet is being pumped out of the aquifer. Number two, the Griffith Energy Plant runs on natural gas. And there is a 400-year supply of natural gas in our country. Three, that plant is currently a peaker plant. It provides electricity to Las Vegas during the summer. And thus, there is a tremendous ability to fund, to provide electricity to of these data centers. Finally, if there were 10 data centers in the Golden Valley Yucca area, they would be using under 5% of the available water in the whole aquifer, 5%. As Chairman, Supervisor Gould pointed out, that's 6,000 homes per data center. That means 10,000, 60,000 homes, it would be 5%. I would love to see this reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last speaker we have during Call to the Public. We are adjourned. Thank you.